Good evening and welcome to the June 17th meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We will begin with the invocation by Mr. Todd Seaver, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Almighty God, find us grateful this evening for this great city we call our home. Thank you for the freedom we enjoy and the opportunities we have. We ask your blessing upon all those who serve us throughout the city. Keep them safe from all harm. May you bless all of our citizens and allow their homes to be places of peace and prosperity. Finally, may you guide our conversations and decisions this evening to assure your will be done. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Move to excuse Mr. Phillips.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Twist to excuse Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the June 3rd, 2019, meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, June 3, 2019. New firefighters were introduced. A presentation was made to the recycling winner. Committee reports, Community and Economic Development Committee recommended that Ordinance Number 012-2019, a rezoning, be approved. Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared urging the Governor and members of Ohio General Assembly to restore the local government fund. Resolution Number R23-2019 urging the Ohio Governor and members of Ohio General Assembly to restore local government fund to pre-recession levels. First reading and adopted. Ordinance Number 012-2019, a rezoning was given, fifth reading, and was adopted. Following various comments, there was a presentation by Health Partners Free Clinic, and then council then adjourned at 7:47 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twist to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Our first committee report this evening is from the Community and Economic Development Committee and Chairman, Mr. Twist.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met on June 11th to consider the petition filed on behalf of 15 property owners on Riverside Drive for the annexation of 18.102 acres from Staunton Township based on the state law section under which this annexation petition was filed and qualifies. There is a very short timeline for council to consider three separate pieces of legislation addressing what services the municipal corporation would provide to any parcel within the city, including that proposed for annexation, a statement of buffering requirements, and legislation consenting or objecting to the annexation. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to provide for the three legislative items required by state law related to the Riverside Drive properties, annexation of 18.102 acres from Staunton Township. To meet the timeline of the state law for an expedited annexation, the committee supports emergency legislation, and that's respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair William Twist.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Twist. The next report is from the Finance Committee and Chairman, Mr. Tom Kendall.
Thank you, Madam President. On June 3rd, 2019, this committee met to consider recommending that the city continue to contract for the maintenance of the city vehicles and equipment. It is estimated that the cost to contract fleet maintenance is less than half of the cost to perform this work in-house. The current contract expires at year end. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for a fleet maintenance program at a cost not to exceed $400,000 for each calendar year of the contract. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Seaver, and myself as Chair of the Finance Committee.
Are there any questions from council members? Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you.
The last report is from the Utilities Committee and Chairman, Mr. John Twilliger.
Thank you, Madam President. On June 3rd, this committee met to consider granting electrical easements to DPNL related to DPNL's moving switch gears above ground within the South Mulberry Street and South Cherry Street parking lots. This will make it both safer and easier for DPNL to access the switch gear facilities when needed. This work does not move electrical lines overhead. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared granting electrical easements to DPNL to accommodate relocation of the switch gear facilities at the South Mulberry Street and South Cherry Street parking lots and authorizing the Director of Public Service to execute easement documents respectfully submitted, William Watts, William Twist, and myself as Chair, John Twilliger.
Does anyone in council have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Twilliger. The Personnel Committee, I believe, has some appointments to announce. Mr. Seaver?
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor Bemish has requested the approval of a new appointment and five reappointments to the City Beautification Committee. This committee supports the request of the mayor. I move that the council approve the following. I guess I can't be heard. I move that council approve the following. New appointment of Barbara Reddick for a two-year term of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2021. She will take the position of Judy Fessinger, who did not wish to be reappointed. Reappointments of the following new two-year term of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2021. Amy Collis, Mary Davis, Phyllis Dawkins, Wanda Trembley, Barry Van Kirk. I move for a second.
Second. Motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Seaver and seconded by Mr. Twist to accept the appointments to the City Beautification Committee. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
We now open the meeting to citizen comments at this time. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to any of the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our Seeing none then, we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to please read Resolution R24-2019.
Resolution Number R24-2019, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for a fleet maintenance program. This would not exceed $400,000 a year and would be bid as a multi-year contract. First reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Yep. I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R25-2019.
Resolution Number R25-2019, resolution establishing municipal services for certain territory containing 18.102 acres, more or less, in Staunton Township, proposed to be annexed to the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Madam President, I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Oda.
Has this already been filed?
Yes.
Yes.
So, when is the 20-day?
Twenty-fifth. With the final, correct?
Yes.
Last week. It was filed last week.
Last week.
Was it June 5th?
Yes.
That it was filed.
Yes.
Okay. That was it.
Any other questions? For the motion?
Move to suspend.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move to adopt. I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R26-2019.
Resolution Number R26-2019, resolution establishing buffer requirements for certain territory containing 18.102 acres, more or less, in Staunton Township, proposed to be annexed to the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is a companion piece of legislation to the previous resolution. First reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move to suspend. I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R27-2019.
Resolution Number R27-2019, resolution consenting to the annexation of certain territory containing 18.102 acres, more or less, in Staunton Township, to the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the third piece of legislation regarding the annexation. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension on that.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read the resolution in memoriam for Mr. James A. Miley.
A resolution in memoriam, James A. Miley, 1950, 2019, whereas the members of council of the City of Troy recognize on behalf of all Troy citizens the service to our city by the late James A. Miley, and whereas James A. Miley was a supporter of the City of Troy, Ohio through his involvement with local organizations and service clubs, and through his work with area bicycling organizations, and whereas James A. Miley was the former director of the Troy Miami County Public Library, and whereas James A. Miley was Troy City Council's representative to the Miami County Hospital Task Force during 1993 to 1994, and served as chairman of that task force, and whereas James A. Miley particularly served the City of Troy, Ohio as a member of Troy City Council from 1992 through 1993, and whereas James A. Miley was removed from our midst by death on June 16, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Troy, Ohio that this expression of appreciation for the dedicated service of James A. Miley to this city and the citizens of this community be extended with sincere sympathy to Mrs. Diane Miley and members of the family of James A. Miley. Be it further resolved that a notation of this resolution be placed in the official records of the City of Troy, Ohio, and that the clerk of councils hereby directed and instructed to forward a duly attested and signed copy of this resolution to the family of James A. Miley.
Okay, and Mrs. Knight will be passing that?
It would need to be adopted by just motion, second, and roll call.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt that resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Is adopted.
Now if you'll please pass that on then to council to sign. We'll move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance 020-2019.
Ordinance Number 020-2019, ordinance granting electric easements to the Dayton Power and Light Company for the relocation of switchgear on parcel ID DO8251014 located along Mulberry Street within the Mulberry Street parking lot, and on parcel ID DO801950 located along Plum Street within the South Cherry Street parking lot. This has been requested by DPNL. It will provide a safer and more efficient manner of maintaining switchgear. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move to suspend the rules. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the ordinance. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not. There's not.
Mayor Bemish, do you have any comments for us this evening?
Well, first of all, thank you to council for the appointments to City Beautification. We all know what the job they do in maintaining the beauty of our city, and thank you very much for the support. Everybody knows that Troy Hospital goes online tomorrow morning, so that'll be exciting. And also, I'm sure all of you are aware of our guests that have joined us for this summer called Sewer Johnson's Sculptures. There's 22 plus one other that's a strawberry girl, so we basically have 23 that people can walk around, and the foot traffic, I think, in downtown will be great this summer into September as well. Really, that's it. Thank you.
Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Titterington, any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, in your packet and for the public, I want to remind everyone that we do have the open house for the clubhouse, the new clubhouse, at the Miami Shores Golf Course. That is tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon, evening, 4 to 7. The dedication, I guess the ribbon cutting, will be at 5 o'clock tomorrow. The Miami County Council has set trick-or-treat for Thursday, October 31st. As always, it'll be from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM in all weather. And third and finally, I want to bring the council up to date and extend a thank you from the City of Beaver Creek. As you may or may not know, I think you know, that since a week ago Thursday, we have been extending mutual aid to that community, or had been, I should say, to help with their cleanup efforts after the Memorial Day tornadoes. Beaver Creek was one of the communities that was hit fairly hard. You might ask, why were we going out to Green County? We first extended support to local and then, you know, to the region, and they're the ones that reached out to us. We did provide some equipment for a brief time to Dayton, so it wasn't just Beaver Creek. Beaver Creek case, with the extensive damage that they had and all the cleanup that they had to do, we provided on Thursday and Friday, I'm trying to remember, it's been a week and a half, but one of our service guys and a truck so that they could be available to drive the truck back and forth to dump debris in Beaver Creek. Then over that weekend, we provided three staff and three trucks. And then this past week, Monday through Friday, we had one staff member in a truck, and they rotated between the various utility and street departments. And so they rotated that. We did 12-hour shifts, so there's eight hours regular pay and four hours of overtime. We have been documenting that with the expectation that we will get reimbursed through the federal and state aid that everybody expects to come through. So, we've not had to extend that support past this past Friday, but, you know, if other communities need it. Given the theory after talking to the mayor, that very easily could have shifted and been Troy that had been hit, and we know that those other communities would have come up here if we would have needed them. So, the city manager on behalf of the mayor of Beaver Creek and the council did want to extend their thanks. I'm sure we'll get more later when they catch their breath, but I wanted to make sure that you heard how they felt about it. Thank you, that's all I have.
City Auditor, Mr. Friggi, any comments?
Thank you, Madam President. I have nothing at this time.
Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
Likewise, I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Any comments from council members this evening?
Madam President?
Mr. Twilliger?
Mr. Titterington, if you could please maybe give us an update on the Sherwood area, and also some comments about markings that have been left on the square following the Strawberry Festival.
Okay, so, one at a time. We had talked about these earlier today, this evening, and prior. The update on Sherwood, we are about a year into the loan through the CIC, and they have been, they're current in their payments. The renovations are nearly complete inside and out. They're whiteboxing them on the inside. They have done quite a bit of exterior work. They were slowed a little bit by some non-city utility requirements that they needed to bring up to date, and that utility was the one that had to do that work, and so there was a matter of scheduling it to get them upgraded. They have several tenants that they've been talking to. No leases are signed because they need to have an availability date, and so as they're narrowing that down, and so that should be re-tenanted shortly. They are a year into the, so one of the loans is a long-term loan, the other one is a two-year term loan. They are one year into that term, and so as far as what their pro forma is showing, they consider themselves on track, and as long as we get our payments, I think we'll believe them. So, they are moving forward with that project. Regarding the markings, I believe what you're talking about are the facility markings that are around the square and on Market and Main Street. Those were numbers for the tents for the Troy Strawberry Festival. Every year, we do use some spray paint on the road. Typically, that deteriorates and disappears fairly quickly. After all this rain, that once it, if it ever dries up, then it may be gone, but in the future, we are looking at some other options that may be a little less permanent. We can't use, we've tried using paper markings in the past, but if you do get some overnight rain, or even dew, or something like that, then that becomes messy and it becomes a litter issue, and we don't want to get in, a trash issue, and we don't want to get into that. So, we are, staff is looking at that with the Troy Strawberry Festival Committee for next year.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Anyone else? Mr. Seaver?
Yeah. As the council knows from our discussions approximately a year ago, it was the 100th anniversary of Troy Rotary, and one of the projects that we engaged in was to build a monarch butterfly habitat on the land adjacent to Treasure Island, on the, if you're looking at the boathouse on the left-hand side. That came to a planting this past Saturday in the 15 minutes that it didn't rain, and And twenty-five approximately Rotarians and members of city staff, in conjunction with Donnie Knight from Department of Wildlife and Jeremy Drake, who had helped us get it together, planted almost three thousand plants, which will attract to serve as pollinators for the monarchs during their migration. There's going to be some benches, some signage. So give it about a year and head out that way. And on the hundred and second anniversary, we'll be celebrating the hundredth anniversary monarch habitat. But I want to thank the city, on behalf of Rotary, for their help in coordinating that. And it really will be neat. There'll be some benches and some pretty plants. And hopefully, people will take advantage of it.
Thank you. Anyone else on council have any comments? Any members of city staff have any comments this evening? Are there any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Don Hessler, 142 Riverside Drive. I guess I got a little behind in the process tonight. And we just saw a notice of the meeting this past weekend and what was planned for the resolutions that affect people on Riverside Drive. And I'm not really sure that the people there understood what the resolutions really are, what they involved. I know I didn't. I didn't get a chance to research them before I came here. But actually, I got behind in the process, so I didn't speak up earlier. But anyway, I don't think that really would have affected the votes. But I did feel like I needed to step forward and apologize to my neighbors and the residents on Riverside Drive for not doing that, for one thing. But just to say to the council, the arguments that we presented earlier when we went through the process of the resolution to let the contracts and things like that that happened earlier, I don't think people really made the connection between how this whole process worked. But at that time, we presented some really valid arguments. And we got not one vote from the council in our favor on any of that stuff. And not even acknowledgement that any of it was true or close to being true or factual. And we spent a lot of time putting all that stuff together. And at the risk of burning bridges and things like that, I know that, I'm not going to stand up here and say a lot of bad things about the council. But we felt like we didn't get any recognition from the council at all for the things that we know happened out on Riverside Drive. We know the amount of traffic. We know the amount of people. We know the danger involved with coming and going from that highway. And now we passed a resolution to go further with a bike path that's going to put people in harm's way every day with cars pulling out on that highway. And you've already passed it, so it's too late to change that, except unless somebody wants to go ahead and call to have it voted on again, to reconsider. But, you know, and that, I think, would have to happen before the meeting was over tonight. And I don't see that happening. But as we go through this process and we get incorporated into the city, I sure hope that we get a little more consideration than we got when we went through this. Because this is going to be a mess when things start happening out there on the road. We just had the gas line put in, and that caused a big mess. When we get ready to do the roads and when we see things like buffering requirements, what are we supposed to think? We don't know what buffering requirements are, and we didn't have a chance to look that up. We're pretty sure what the consent is because we all signed some forms. Statement of services, we think that that's probably where we talked about and the city agreed to do the sewer lines and that kind of stuff. So we can kind of do that. But the scary part is the buffering requirements. We have no clue what that means. That's, you know, to us, that's some kind of obscure statement that only the people on the committee have a clue of what it is. So that's kind of what I wanted to say, because I don't see any point in saying much else, because we don't get any consideration from the council. So thank you for listening.
Mr. Titterington, can you please explain the buffering requirements?
The buffering requirements, that is a state requirement. It's one of the statements that you have to pass. Basically, what it's saying is that any community that has zoning buffering requirements for any zoning actions that are taken for citizens who are already in the city must apply to anybody that's coming into the city. So they get the same rights as far as the buffering, any buffering requirements, as if they had already been in the city. So it's a protection for them as they come into the city.
Okay, and what is buffering?
Well, buffering is typically, if you have a residential district that is adjacent to a manufacturing facility, whenever improvements are made to one or the other, then certain buffering requirements come into place where there has to be some kind of screening. Either a fence or trees and bushes, some kind of a blockage, a wall, if you will. And so what this is saying is if you're annexed in and you're coming in in one use that is different from another use and in any other case, a buffering requirement would be triggered, then it applies to this as well.
I think, I understand that. That was, I thank you for that explanation. But you let me stand here for a couple of minutes, so I thought of some other things. We never resolved what direction the post office might be taking on our mailboxes. And I just want to mention that a lot of the people in some that followed us in tonight, we still object to that bike path. We don't see any logic in it. It's not safer. The stories that were put together about the safety, those were off-the-cuff things. They weren't real. We went out and surveyed this. We talked to the people. And how many people have been run over since we had the last meeting? None. And, you know, we're just exasperated. But we are looking forward to any kind of dust-up that we might have later on when the city wants to come after the property down at the end of our lots that runs along the river, to put in another bike path or another walkway or somewhere, something down there. Because we're probably not going to make it that easy for the city to condemn the lower ends of our properties and separate us from the river. So I just thought I'd give you a heads up on that. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dr. Conard, 1210 South Clay Street, Troy, Ohio. You mentioned the butterflies out there. And that's behind the old transmission place? It's my understanding, that land is contaminated. And I was told that one time, as long as you don't dig it in, it's okay. So I hope you don't dig too down, too deep to plant your flowers, or the butterflies might just start glowing. The second thing is, I still like to see, we are getting an absorbent amount of rain, more so than I've ever seen in my lifetime. And I still complain about the catch basins ain't cleaned off. They're covered with limbs, bottles, plastic bottles, anything and everything. And I think it would help the city out a lot if they would clean them off to reduce the amount of flooding into some of our streets. It's, you know, it's not that big of a deal to clean them off. It doesn't take that much manpower. We've got them, we're on the payroll, let's use them. We don't have enough, but let's use them. The third is, what was the third? I'm getting old. Bear with me. Do what?
Testify, brother.
I can't hear you if you ain't close to your microphone.
I said testify, brother.
There you go. Yeah. Well, I forgot what the third was, so I'll think about it later. Oh, no, that isn't it. Okay.
Do you have a comment? Mr. Titterington?
Just a couple of pieces of clarification. The butterfly habitat is on a five-acre parcel that is north of Smith's Boathouse Restaurant. That is land that some of you were on council when ITW offered that to us as a donation, complete with a certificate that shows that it is clean, it is capped. They have passed all the EPA inspections. The restriction is, is that we cannot dig deep into it, twenty-four inches or more. The plugs that were planted, as well as the bushes, went no further than twelve inches. So that's one thing. Number two, in between rain events, we have been out clearing catch basins. We do have hundreds of catch basins throughout town. Unless we are called by a resident to ask to inspect, or a business, or a representative of that business, then if we were to try to inspect all hundreds of those, we would have to do so probably on a weekly basis, if not more often. If it's the spring and summer season, we are constantly fighting the battle of property owners or their contractors mowing into the street. Or as it gets closer to fall, then we have leaf season, so we have to worry about that. Mr. Conard is correct. There, we do not have enough employees to be able to do, to go and inspect and then try to clean all of those catch basins. And I dare say, nobody would want to see the price tag to hire enough employees to do that. So we are trying to be diligent on it. We did have an inordinate amount of rain just in the last, just over the weekend. And we're trying to play catch up, even though it's supposed to rain for the rest of the week.
So if citizens know of one that's blocked specifically, if they let the city know?
We have heard from them on our website, by phone calls, social media, you name it. We're hearing about it.
Can I say something, Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Oda?
If you live close to a catch basin, can't you clear it off yourself?
Yes, we, yes, you can. We, yes, without trying to pick it up or move it at all, if you can clear what's on top.
The brush and the plastic glasses.
Absolutely. Yes, we encourage that.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Okay, Madam President?
Mr. Kendall?
If I may, I would like to make a motion that council recesses into executive session to consider the purchase of property for public purposes. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Kendall and a second by Mr. Lutz to move into executive session. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Motion is adopted. To the public, you may choose to stay or you may choose to leave. It's up to you. That is the last thing on our agenda. And I thank you all for attending tonight's meeting and have a safe and peaceful week.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we reconvene council out of executive session.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to return to regular session. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And this meeting is adjourned.